Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Thursday, March 3rd, 3:322 City Council Work Session. Topic this evening is an overview of the Washington Lee Master Plan. Because of the connectivity with Washington and Lee, I know that Mr. Ziegler and Ms. Strawn have both recused themselves. And Mr. Smith?
I was going to state the same.
Very good.
On every other matter that's involved Washington and Lee with some critical nature and action required by City Council, I've always recused myself and plan to continue that practice. That's it. Thanks.
Very good. We'll excuse you as well. And then there were three. I'd like to call the meeting to order, or call the meeting to order, but the topic is overview of WNL Master Plan. And I will go directly to Arnie if he's ready to walk us through the details.
Good evening to you all. Request was made for a work session just to go over institutional overlay and specifically because of an impending item that will be before you. I believe most of you have already listened in to the Planning Commission meeting last week. So my intent today is really just to go over the institutional overlay. So pages three and four primarily of your packet. Some of the other things that were provided are just background such as the zoning map because there are a number of properties. It would be helpful to know what the underlying zoning is, so therefore the zoning map was provided to you. And just a bit of history because it took us so long. And also I have to admit, I was cribbing from the Planning Commission packet when we did a similar work session a year ago. Sort of cribbed from that. And so some of the information in here may be excess or more than you need. But we updated the history and Kate spent a good bit of time on that timeline that begins on page seven and goes to page eight. And then for a baseline, we have the very last page, which is the 1998 Campus Master Plan. Again, not really trying to get too much into the WNL specific request this evening. Hopefully trying to be a little bit more generic about what institutional overlay does and how the campus master plan that gets a master plan gets implemented for campuses. And I should say, it's not just for WNL. We have the same type of campus master plan and rezoning to institutional overlay for Sigma Nu's campus and also for the hospital. And I may even be leaving out one, but those are the three that I'm aware of at this time.
Arnie, I'll just echo, the big piece of tonight is to understand the process for dealing with this type of zoning issue so that we can be better educated as we progress. It's been quite some time since, with two faces on this council that have never been through it, and Ms. Alexander and myself, it's been many years since we looked at something request, so.
We have a couple of other overlays, historic overlays, floodplain overlay, but this is the zoning overlay. So we have a base district and then an institutional overlay gets placed on top of that. So I'm going to be a little bit boring and go almost line for line through pages three and four, just to sort of cover what is in the institutional overlay. Again, this is a little bit different concept. You get to keep the underlying zone district and then you're applying this overlay for the campus or the institutional type use. I'm not going to go through the intent section there completely, but it is intended for larger institutions such as colleges and medical campuses. The second part there for overlay concept, it is to enable the district to operate in harmony with the plan for land use and population density embodied in this chapter. The institutional overlay district is created as a special district to be superimposed on base districts contained in this chapter. And then we're supposed to have a special symbol for that in the zoning map. And I'll have to say, the map that we have online right now on our GIS is not completely accurate and we have to clean up some items. As an example, the two churches that are almost surrounded by WNL are included in the institutional overlay and they should not be. And then we have a couple of other cleanup items. And that was why it was very valuable for us to go back and get that history from 1985 on so that we can clean up some of those inconsistencies that are currently shown on our institutional overlay map that is on our GIS.
Arnie, just to confirm, when you said the two churches, the Catholic Church and the Episcopal Church, correct?
Correct.
Thanks.
Any specific questions on the overlay? In other words, if you pick any property on the WNL campus, either existing or the few that are being proposed, they will have an underlying zoning district. Mattingly House, as an example, is going to be zoned C1 and it already has the overlay, so it would have the institutional overlay on top of that. And whatever is approved in the current master plan for that Mattingly House, according, I should say that that is a building that's right there on the corner of Lee Avenue and Washington Street. Almost right across from the Episcopal Church. And I was just picking one. If you pick another one, I can tell you what the underlying zoning district is and they will have the institutional overlay.
Arnie, I do have a question. It's kind of a general one and it's a, when we develop the institutional overlay, what was, I mean, do we have any indication what the actual purpose? I mean, there are two potential purposes. One is to provide the university and hospitals, why not flexibility with their development. The other is to rein in these partners, if you will, within designated areas of our community. So do you know why we went with an institutional overlay all those years ago?
If I remember correctly, in 1985, it was WNL was about to start another project and they requested the institutional overlay be implemented. And I cannot recall at this time what that project was, but it was shortly after the institutional overlay was recommended by WNL. I'm not sure if they recommended the language, just the idea, but it was something that started with them. We adopted the language that you see before you. I didn't go line by line, but it is very similar to what was adopted in 1985. And then they shortly came in after the adoption of that and added a project. And I cannot recall off the top of my head which project that was. It might be in our, might actually be in our, but that's how it started. But what it provides you is oversight. For one, planning, so we know for the next 10 years or however long their campus master plan is valid, what they're thinking about doing different than they have now, where they're trying to put some investment. So it's that planning purpose that's valuable. But what it provides the city is oversight. If there are properties that are being requested to be rezoned to institutional overlay and then added to the campus master plan and if that proposal is not appropriate, then you have the oversight and can deny that particular request. So this is the way you control some of the land use that's on a particular campus, be it medical campus, be it educational campus.
I'd piggyback by saying, my perception is it drew boundaries and hopes and aspirations changes over the years where they planned to go into the future from that standpoint. So there was no surprise. Everybody could look at a map and see what was going on. So when the, as a child, I remember a couple of homes being across from Doremus Gym. Washington Lee acquired that property and I think the houses continued on and were used for some type of housing for a short period of time, but as part of that institutional overlay was intended to, they were going to be gone. There was no salvaging those houses at that time.
When I first moved to town, it was 1989, and Lindfest Center was under construction. And I think that's the, what the project was that you were talking about, that happened is because the planning for that probably began a couple of years, several years prior to construction. And it was that property that was next to the Mann property, as I recall. And it was that property that created the concern in part of encroaching on to the city, the creeping on to the city. And that's kind of where my recollection begins on that. Good Lindfest Center, but that was the problem.
Actually, while we're on the subject, I'm a little confused about the institutional overlay as it applies to 223 McLaughlin now. So is any part of that parcel within the institutional overlay now?
Yes, half of it is. So that, is that the northerly half or the easterly half, I can't remember? But the portion that is closest to the actual building for Wilson Hall is already in the institutional overlay. And we can tell that if you go onto the GIS and you turn on, not the institutional overlay, but the, sorry, the institutional overlay and then also the, that particular drawing comes from the comp plan. So we have the comp plan drawing that's sort of a bubble drawing, but it's actually applied parcel by parcel. So you can see where the, not the institutional overlay, sorry, the civic campus and post district and then applied to half of that piece of property. So when their rezoning comes in, we want to also only apply it to half of that piece of property to be consistent with the future land use designation. So I have to restate what I think, your question was, is it currently in the institutional overlay?
Yeah, the reason why I'm asking is because I think you had some recommendations for the Planning Commission and one of which was to approve the request to apply the institutional overlay to this property. So I'm just, I'm a little confused by that.
Okay. Now, I should clarify because your question was, is the institutional overlay currently to this property? And I immediately jumped to future land use designation, so that was my fault. It is currently, does not have a institutional overlay on it. Our future land use map shows half of that property as civic campus post. So rezoning needs to be consistent.
Yeah.
So my recommendation, because that building is already partially on it, so I don't see the harm in rezoning the property or adding the institutional overlay to half of the property because that would be consistent with the future land use designation of civic campus post.
Right. That makes sense to me. I just was trying to figure out where we were with that. And so the recommendation that you made was to apply the institutional overlay to that half of the property.
To be consistent with. And then otherwise, they could also have asked for a comp plan amendment to have the entire property designated as civic campus post. I recommended to them that they do not do that unless they really had the intent of expanding the building that way because otherwise we get into this other issue with expansion of campus.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
And just to put that dog on the eye, that property, that half you're talking about is the Mann property.
I believe so.
Right.
And it also leads a little bit to our issue with not knowing what was approved and having to do the research to figure out what was approved over time. We really have a hard time finding files if we go back more than 15 or 20 years. And so we had to go through the minutes and the minutes don't always give you the staff reports, the maps, so it's a little bit difficult. So that piece of property, I suggested that they clarify and also the piece that was, the property that was on West Washington Street was not clear. So I asked them to clean up that as well with bringing that in. And then we found out by doing more research that the three parcels around the West Washington also need to come in. So they will be submitting, and I know I'm getting off topic, but we will have a whole new submittal for them and start that public hearing process over.
Arnie?
Go ahead.
I was comparing the maps that we were provided and looking at the aerial view of Google Maps. And it looks like there's an expansive piece of wooded area between the back campus and the Maury River. Now, it could be that WNL doesn't own all of that because it's not reflected on their maps. Do you think that could be the reason for that or just it got cut off?
As an example, are you saying in the last page, if that is the 1998 version and they're not showing all of their land holdings, or are you talking about even the more recent submittal may not be showing all of their?
I haven't seen it on anything. It's not on the last page here.
But that last page is from 1998? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm asking. Sorry, last page in your meeting packet or your work session packet.
Yeah, because when you, that's not inclusive of land that Washington Lee has acquired, such as the Warner property. And that's probably some of that wooded land going down to the river.
We're probably also getting way out into the county at that point.
It could very well be.
Not way out into the county, but out into the county.
And I would say, looking at some of these boundaries and details, we will get to that at some point in time in the future. You know, our purpose tonight is really to understand what the, what it means to have an overlay in the master plan and how we navigate, working with Washington and Lee and the other folks that have an institutional overlay with our regulations and what the process is so that we can navigate it. Where the lines are, which properties and when to be determined and figured out from that standpoint. But good, great questions.
So just to continue with the permitted uses in 7.3 there, that is a long sort of drawn out sentence, but in essence, it says, what you can do as far as permitted uses would be public and private schools, colleges, universities, medical campus, other educational research institutions, and including hospitals and other medically related facilities, dormitory or other student housing, university administered fraternity and sorority houses, other fraternity sorority houses with conditional use permits, staff, faculty housing, classrooms, library, religious, administrative, recreational, athletic, alumni parking, not alumni, and parking, those are separate, and service facilities, signs and other accessory uses. So that's the list of permitted uses. So you have your base district. A lot of, a lot of a particular institutional or educational facility that we have, a lot of their base is actually R1 zoning district. R1 allows single family and two family. But because they have rezoned or added the institutional overlay and they have a campus master plan, they get to do all the buildings that you see on their campus currently. And again, that's the quick rundown of the permitted uses that are allowed in an institutional district through a campus master plan. So you have the base zoning district and you get to do everything that's allowed in the base zoning district. Then you have this overlay and what's allowed in the overlay, generally the things that I just read in the record and then, it's not really a record, but the generally the things that I read. And then whatever is specifically included in the campus master plan for that parcel. If they want to add on to a building that's shown in their campus master plan and it's not part of it, so if they want to add on or there's a new building, then the document has to get amended. And it can get amended in two ways. One, you amend the campus master plan or you come in and do a conditional use permit specific just for that particular property. And I should say, every time you amend the campus master plan, that's already, has the overlay, you don't have to touch the overlay. But if you bring in new properties, you have to rezon them first to that overlay district and then apply the campus master plan on top of that. So that's why in most of the time when you aren't, or all the time that you are not adding new properties, you won't have the rezoning component with it. You'll just have an amended campus master plan.
And the process, when Washington Lee wants to extend that institutional overlay, they first have to get the property rezoned. And once it's rezoned into institutional overlay, then they can apply for housing, office, lecture halls, et cetera. So, and when they apply for the zoning, it will first go to Planning Commission, they'll review it to see if it's appropriate to extend that border, that institutional border. And we'll quit picking on Washington Lee. When the hospital decides that they really need Schulz's property to expand the hospital campus, if they wanted to buy that and extend it, they would have to go through that process. So they would have it rezoned. The rezoning would put it in the institutional overlay and then they could say, we want to put medical offices in here. And it would go through Planning Commission, recommendation on to council. And if Planning Commission or council found that it wasn't compliant with comprehensive plan or current zoning or future plans for the city, they could deny it on that basis.
Correct. And just to take it a little bit further, if the Schulz's building ends up being part of the campus for the hospital and at some future point they decide they don't need it anymore and it goes back on the market as a separate piece of property, what governs? The underlying zoning district, which is C2, so all the commercial uses that are allowed in C2, and I would argue that whatever's allowed in the campus master plan for that particular property is still allowed until they decide to do something different that's either not allowed or approved already in the campus master plan specifically shown for that property or something that's not allowed in C2, they really don't have to come back for another land use item, be it a rezoning or be it a conditional use permit. So we have to just think that when it gets applied, the new property comes in, institutional overlay district gets applied to it, and then whatever's approved specifically for that property through the campus master plan approval.
So going on that, I'm probably getting too granular, but hospital buys the Schulz's building. And by the way, there's no contract. This is hypothetical completely. I'm making it up. But if the hospital were to expand and decide they wanted that to be housing for rotating or travel nurses and doctors, they would go through the institutional overlay rezoning, then they would come back and modify their master plan for that to be housing, multifamily housing. And it, and then 10 years later they decide, we really don't need this anymore. When they put on the market, it could continue to be housing because it was the use or goes back to C2.
And if anybody wants to do anything that doesn't fall within one of those two categories, then they would have to come back through either rezoning or conditional use or whatever it is that they're trying to accomplish there.
And the only way the institutional overlay can be removed is how?
Through a rezoning process.
Okay. So if the city felt that the hospital really shouldn't have that land behind them in the houses, that area that we'd really like to see that come out of the institutional, we could ask them to modify their institutional overlay and release that for single family dwelling or whatever. They own it, so they, it would remain up to them to adopt that zoning, but it would be incumbent upon the city to initiate that or the hospital, the property owner, to initiate it.
Those would all be public hearing processes.
Right.
The only thing I would add to it, if we're going to come in and do an institutional overlay and a campus master plan, those aren't two separate processes. As you noticed with the recent submittal, we're doing two processes there. One's a rezoning and the institutional overlay amendment, sorry, and the campus master plan amendment at the same time. And the next time it comes around, it's going to have comprehensive plan amendment for one parcel, a rezoning for a number of parcels and the campus master plan amendment. So I just wanted to clarify that it's not two separate processes or three. It could all be done at the same time.
And it can be done either way. There's no requirement. So you can piecemeal it and do one step or you can come and say, hear all the ingredients, bake it up.
And just another thing to sort of add there, we've, there were a number, or at least two comments at the last meeting when we were talking about the latest submittal. And for some reason, there's an understanding that if an institutional entity owns a piece of property, has the institutional overlay and a campus master plan applied to a piece of property, and then they just sell it off, that all of a sudden whoever they sell it to, they can do whatever they want. They're not bound by underlying zoning district or campus in the, and that's just not true. It's also one particular reason, the recommendation in the last meeting, at least in the staff report, was to tie the development on the campus to the campus master plan. So, whoa, I can't remember the language. All development shall be in substantial compliance with the development concept or with the campus master plan and we'll put the date stamp on it, that type of thing, so that people have a better understanding that what gets approved is what you get to do for that entity and also for the subsequent entities, if there are any. Because the zoning goes with the property, doesn't go with ownership.
Which is true for all zoning. So when a home becomes zoned for conditional use permit for bed and breakfast, it can carry with the property. It doesn't diminish with the sale of the property to a new owner.
So any further questions about sort of what's allowed in the underlying zoning district and how the overlay gets applied and any permutations on ownership or use?
I'm going to say no question. I mean, go ahead, Mr. Algood.
Observation, not a question. The process that we're talking about tonight, that you're talking about, and we're, I'm attempting to follow or not, has many elements to it. And if I'm having an issue with trying to follow it, I suspect many others are having similar issues on trying to follow it. Would it be possible, and this is just a suggestion, would it be possible to prepare a flow chart for the public to see where, here's step one, here's the arrows that go to this step and this step? So it's very straightforward and visual for anyone who cares to look at it, to look at it and to see it without having to go back and go through, convoluted is the wrong word, but go through all these multiple steps and whatnot to try to make sense out of it. And that's my suggestion.
I would just say that we're very short-staffed right now and I don't, I would, I would be wary of putting additional requirements on staff right now. I think that's a great idea. That would be wonderful if you guys can do it, but you know, understanding that you might not be able to put that together in a short timeframe.
The other observation I would make is the circumstance related to this process. It's much like our circumstances in working through Spotswood. The flow chart wouldn't have worked because we've gone a lot of different directions as we've gone through that process. And the sale of Spotswood property and its development is a really big deal. The institutional overlay and the master plan of Washington and Lee, again, is a really big deal as it encroaches neighborhoods. I wish Tim Golden still lived in the city and was here to pound on the table about institutional creep as he did for most of the 90s. The thing that I think is important in the observation I was going to make is that we take it one step at a time. There's nothing that precludes Washington and Lee or the hospital or Sigma Nu from making a request with all the elements at one time. Because of the complexity and the different moving parts, my preference, and I'm hearing from some of council that can deal with the question of Washington and Lee, is we'd like to take it one step at a time. It may slow down the process, but Washington Lee's been here for 250-plus years and I don't think they're going anywhere. And I don't want to be non-business friendly, but I think it would help so that people know each step of the way, what we're doing, what we're considering and what the impacts are. Because if it's all at one time, it almost feels like a snowball rolling at us and to get all the different pieces and parts is complex and convoluted as you're trying to see the mosaic.
And I would say that maybe we need to discuss, what is the purpose of the institutional overlay for the city today? Not necessarily what it was when it was created, but today, are we going to use this as a way to sort of rein in institutional creep? That may be why we have an institutional overlay. And so it could also help the university, but it could also assist the city and its residents in understanding where we feel comfortable with development for the university and the other institutional players to go. So to me, I'd kind of like to make that clear, that that's how we want to use, or that's how I would prefer to use, the institutional overlay. And if we do that, even though of course the university has every right to purchase or be gifted property from anywhere in the city, that isn't a fait accompli that it's going to be rolled into the institutional overlay. So I think by making that clear, it may help us. So that's.
Your point's well taken and this is going to sound like a statement, but it's more a question. The intent says to provide an orderly development of major institutions. So to pick on the hospital again, if they purchase the Schulz's building, they may or may not incorporate as part of their institutional overlay. They may just convert it to commercial or rather housing for travel nurses, et cetera, because there's such a huge demand for that short-term rental-type circumstance. But it never makes it to the overlay because it's going to be a completely different function and use. When we look at, I think the purpose of the overlay is when Washington Lee wants to build a new commerce school, they've got property and they want to build it on there and they're going to come back and seek approval for that amendment to their master plan, but it doesn't change the use of their property. It's just a different building in a different but it doesn't change the use of their property, it's just a different building in a different location, if that makes sense. So again, I think, part and parcel is, if the institutional overlay doesn't extend, that does some, it doesn't eliminate the institutional creep, because Washington and the hospital and Sigma Nu can buy additional properties, but not necessarily that it's in the institutional overlay.
Now, clarify that, and just one, I wanna jump back to one point, Mr. Mary, you said you prefer that these items come in individually, and we handle them individually. That may be a little bit difficult to do, and I'll give you an example of the whole property, the property that doesn't have any development on Lee Avenue, I think it's 12 Lee Avenue, right behind Blue Sky. That piece of property, if you just bring it in, and there's a request to change the comp plan to the appropriate designation, and you ask for an institutional district, overlay district for it, I'm not sure that you're gonna have a great public hearing because you don't know what the specific use is until you see the campus master plan that's being requested to be applied to that. So then you're looking at a request to go to institutional overlay, and it could be any one of these permitted uses that I read in the record, then you're debating all of those, as opposed to having maybe a more targeted discussion on museum slash parking garage. Well, I think, I think the answer to that is, we would just say no, without those components. We'd have to see the traffic study, we'd have to see what the building would look like, and based on that, then we would decide whether it goes in the institutional overlay.
Yeah, your point's very well taken. The challenge, there's nothing that precludes Washington and Lee from providing, this is our vision, but we're not going to approve it, I don't think, this council, all carte blanche right now, from that standpoint. I guess, in throwing pebbles, when the Hillel House was built, it was going to be a Jewish center of faith, and I'm not sure when a kosher kitchen and snack bar was added to it, but I don't recall that ever coming up to council for approval. And I think even, third-year housing, I personally asked the question, what will be in third-year housing? Will there be any commercial activity? I was told, absolutely not. There will be a resource center if someone needs toilet paper, or toothpaste, or toiletries for their dorm. And last time I checked, there's a swanky restaurant and pub there. And so part of the angst in looking at this is what gets approved and what happens. And I know, from a personal standpoint, that's the angst I have in this process, and wanting to take it one step at a time as best we can. Things change, if you wanna make it blue instead of green, yeah, it's still the same building, but when the scope of the project expands so significantly, and is contrary to what you've put in the record, it's a little upsetting. And I think that, I know that's where folks that were attending the planning commission last week, were looking at a concern to slow down the process.
And we'll, I'm not sure what's happened in the past necessarily, but when ultimately it comes down to what can we approve through a zoning permit or building permit, and I would tell you that if a building all of a sudden is being added to, that didn't show that addition in the campus master plan, it's not gonna get a building permit, it's not gonna get a zoning permit. If there's a use all of a sudden popping up in the building that wasn't approved specifically, and is not one of the specific permitted uses, then that's, I would ask them to come back to you for an amendment to the campus master plan, or through a conditionally used permit. So maybe, there's maybe a failing from staff in the past, I'm not sure, to hold them to what they, not promised, but what was actually approved in a document, either through proffers and rezoning, or specifically in a campus master plan.
Right. I just share those experiences, the one personal experience in speaking to the representative of Washington and Lee in a council meeting, I assume it was recorded, but I'm not sure, and I'm not, you know, looking for who to blame from that standpoint, but just wanna make sure that we have shared expectations and shared successes with what we're trying to accomplish. Ms. Alexander.
Just to add to that, I think part of your questioning was because we were concerned about how it was gonna affect our businesses downtown.
Right.
And that's what led to that. But the question that I had, well, the comment that I had was, that I kind of agreed with what Mr. Alli-Good said about a flow chart, because we're not on planning commission, we didn't go through the training, and I think that, you know, the process is very clear to people who are on planning commission, all the what-ifs, the buts, ands, and if we had something to go by, I think that would be a helpful guide, and I don't think it would take long for you all to do that for us.
How about we give it a shot, but if you give us wide latitude on what the thing looks like when it gets to you?
I don't care what...
Because that's not my strong suit, and there are a number of permutations, and so if, we'll take a stab at it.
You can write it in your own handwriting, I don't care.
I'm always mindful that Greek makes a lot of sense to people that speak Greek. However, I can't teach you Greek overnight, so we'll all work on this together, but the questions and support is greatly appreciated.
Right, and I would certainly agree to help out on the flow chart, lend my two cents on that, I've done flow charts before.
Very good.
But it's thoughtful, it's a thoughtful process, that's the thing. And what we're trying to do, what we're trying to do, at least as I see what we're trying to do, is we're trying to make this a very open process, and we want to avoid that snowball effect that the mayor mentioned, and we wanna have the citizens of Lexington have confidence that we're doing the right thing, and not throwing the whole package at them at one time, so that it's not understandable, it needs to be understandable in their doing, and that's the rationale behind what I'm saying.
And this whole idea of having a base district and an overlay district is a fairly easy concept, until you start trying to implement it, and that's where it gets complicated fairly quickly, and to even make it more complicated, we also have the ability, and I'm jumping to condition uses, that condition uses can also come into play. So if, for instance, they did not use your example with Schules, if the hospital purchased that piece of property, wanted to put housing in it, but multifamily housing wasn't allowed because it's a condition use permit, they could go and do a condition use permit for that particular property, public hearing process, as you always have, and comes to you for a final, as opposed to specifically adding the institutional overlay, and then amending their campus master plan. So they have that flexibility, as it's written into our code. My assumption there is that it's written in, if you don't wanna open up the whole campus master plan for review and approval, again, you only wanna do that one little targeted piece of property and bring that in, that that's why it's included here. So there is the extra flexibility of not just opening up your campus master plan, but you could, can do a condition use permit for a piece of property to bring it in.
Yes, sir.
Not mentioned at any of the recent meetings, but mentioned way back, I'm gonna say, at least six months ago, or somewhere in that range, is the clock. The clock, the timer. There is a clock associated with this process, once an application has been submitted, that's true, isn't it?
We specifically have a rule, and I'm pretty sure it's from the state code, that says the planning commission has no more than 100 days to review a rezoning. It does not say that in our code specifically about a campus master plan, as an example, but that's to prevent the planning commission from sitting on something for too terribly long. And if the applicant is in agreement to extend that time, it can be extended. What we had at our last meeting were two particular applications, I think we're gonna have a brand-new slate at the next planning commission meeting, actually, it's gonna be more than the next meeting, the next meeting when we handle that. So the clock starts again, once that new submittal comes in.
It's just something to be aware of.
And just echo, yeah, so that the city doesn't, just from benign neglect, not deal with the request.
Yeah, so just to clarify, if through benign neglect, the planning commission does not act on a request, what happens? Is it deemed approved? Well, it still comes to you, but there would either be no recommendation, or it's automatically recommended in favor, I can't remember what the state code says specifically, but... It would still come to us. The applicant then just gets to go to council after that 100 days. I'm not sure what the recommendation would be, if there even is one in that case, but they're no longer held up by that step. Okay, got it. I'm gonna move on to area and bulk regulations, that section basically says, the bulk regulations, such as your lot area, lot width, street frontage, setbacks, height, yards, parking, and signs, are all according to your underlying zoning district, unless the campus master plan specifically says there's some sort of variation to that. So if the front yard setback is 25 feet for a particular structure, but in the campus master plan, they show it at 15 feet, and it gets approved that way, then it's a 15-foot setback for that particular structure. A lot of campus, a lot of these plans are gonna be so generic, they're most likely not gonna have the detail to get into these type of standards. And the last submittal, as an example, did not have anything regarding, or detailed enough to be considered area and bulk standards, that were less restrictive than what's in the underlying zone district. So we would always go to the underlying zone district for the height requirements, or for the lot size, unless there's something specifically approved in that overlay, or in the master plan. So to apply that on a particular thing, the McLaughlin Triangle, it was, in the master plan, as we're posed, and I understand, I think that's been withdrawn, if I'm correct. It is intended to be withdrawn. Okay. So, but assuming it weren't, and that were approved, and that were put into the institutional overlay, what would that have meant for both Washington and Lee, and our planning commission? Would that mean that they have a bit more flexibility in what they do there? I'm assuming it does, correct? They would be held to those blue blocking things that were shown in the campus master plan, where the house footprints were basically there, and then they were attached in the rear portions, and I would interpret, the height didn't get any taller, because the buildings that are, actually, most of them, not all of them, are two-story, so they were still showing two-story buildings that were just attached in the back. So my interpretation is, you showed something, not highly detailed, but that's basically what you have to build. You couldn't all of a sudden tear down, well, actually, a couple of buildings they did recommend would be torn down, but it would still be in a format where there would be a structure, and then halfway back, it gets tied together, and in the back, it's completely connected. One extra step that they would have to do, I hope they answered that part of your question. Well, to be clear, I mean, could they do that regardless of whether it was the institutional overlay or not? No, okay. No, that, one, they're violating setback center, so an extra step that they would have to do is combine all those properties into one, because all those buildings are getting attached, and that's violating a setback, so I think the property lines, the intervening property lines would have to be removed for that attachment to occur, so it'd end up on one piece of property with just setbacks coming from, you know, the outsides, from the perimeter, as opposed to all those intervening property lines. Okay, thank you. That's just a detail on that one. So it's basically what they show specific to that property is what they would get to do if it was approved. And if you only have sort of blocks there, then it is maybe a little bit open interpretation, but it's not so open that they get to demolish all 12 of those structures and put up a three-story building. That would not be something that would be allowed without having an amendment to the campus master plan.
Which part and parcel, I think, is the comfort level with this council to say, bring us your request for the overlay with your dreams, and then we'll look at what happens in the future, knowing that if you do approve the institutional overlay, you're not obligated to approve a three-story building, and they can't do it by right, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then if they purchase or gift a piece of property, and it's not included in the institutional overlay, either denied or withdrawn, then they just get to use it as-is, under their current zoning district, and let's say it's R1 zoning district, and it's one structure, and it has three apartments in it, and we only allow two in the R1 district, because you have one family and two family, but you can't have three family, well, then it's just a nonconformity that gets to continue, cannot be expanded, so you just look at what is the existing zoning for that, and that's how they go forward, until, or unless they come in in the future point, and try to rezone again to the institutional overlay with the campus master plan, with perhaps something that's more palatable at that time to be approved. 7.6 talks about contents of the master plan that need to be submitted, I think there would be some folks who would say that they did not meet those standards, and I would argue that they did. They're not highly detailed, and again, there has to be a little bit of latitude, so blue boxes are sufficient for submittal, this isn't to the point of site plan approval. So that's just the quick requirements for the submittal items for a master plan. That next item B is the action of the planning commission, and they're basically looking at what they normally do, which are the police powers, they're looking for health, safety, and welfare. So they make their recommendation as best they can on reviewing the report, and making sure that development's not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. A couple of slightly different items, they have to do a finding of fact, we normally don't do findings of fact unless we're at the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is a more detailed, you make a motion, but there's sort of findings that go along with that, why did you make the motion? Hopefully, it'll be clear in the record, and in this case, it will be, because it's gonna be a long record. So they have to be a little bit more specific as to why they made a recommendation, and that's called a finding of fact. And then amendments to the master plan are gonna be the same procedure, so always public And then a couple of other things, just to quickly mention, because it looks like we're getting somewhat close, I think there's also somewhat of a misinterpretation that that's all that applies, but it's not. You still have the authority through site plan approval, and then building permit. Site plans come to the planning commission typically, and it says here that site plans for all the properties, or all the projects, would go to planning commission, but there's even a caveat here, is that's unusual, because if it's a project that is within 200 feet of the boundary of the master plan, or along a public road, so within 200 feet of a public road, that site plan doesn't just go to planning commission for approval, it actually comes to you. That's the only site plan that you would see, is for a master plan that's within 200 feet of the boundary, or 200 feet of a public road. So you will likely be seeing site plans in the future.
For anything on Washington Street, Nelson, Lee Avenue, et cetera, all public streets within 200 feet.
Correct.
Arnie, what about the streets themselves, in regard to Washington Street and Lee Avenue, and how they will be affected?
They aren't affected in the rezoning process, but if you're asking if someone were to request in a campus master plan whether or not a street be given up, is that more the question? You could approve that, if it's acceptable, obviously, you could approve that through the campus master plan, but you still have to go and have the applicant do an abandonment application, which is a public hearing process as well. And there's a lot of things to consider in the giving up of a roadway, and you probably have to have agreements for the utilities that are already in there, not just ours, but other folks, so it gets complicated, but there is an abandonment process that we have to follow, it's a state process for abandoning any rights away, or public, well, rights away.
If part of Washington Street is an alternate route for Route 60, would VDOT be involved in that?
Not to my knowledge, but I'd rather have Jeff Martin answer that question.
And by all measures, we own the public streets in town, we can get some funding from the state for paving and things of that nature, which we normally do. Washington and Lee can say, as any neighbor can say, gee, we'd like to, for this road to be one-way, doesn't mean we have to approve it, and there's a process for that request, which is part, is part of the master plan, I think that Washington and Lee was originally, they originally brought to us in January, I think of '21, so...
It's a little bit less detailed at this point, as to, do they, they have some ideas for that particular property, but it's not well-described in the narrative that I recall, saying that they actually want it, but there has some ideas for one-way traffic. So you have to be really clear in your approval, when you get to that, are you approving discussions to further giving up the road, or even whether or not you're approving the one-way traffic, or the bike lanes? So you have to be clear on what the approval does include and doesn't include. And then the one, the last item, at least for me, the last item on here, 7.9, I don't really know what that means. So it says, "Design review is required for all facilities in accordance with the requirements of Article II." I think Article II is the wrong reference. I don't think we brought forward the correct one. I believe it's supposed to be entrance corridor overlay. So if you're in a special design district, then as such as entrance corridor, sheets had to come in, they had to go through the planning commission and we have standards for landscaping and lighting and site design and a few others. So there would be an extra step for them to go through to develop the sheets, as an example, before they got to site plan. I think that's what they're trying to get at here with the design review, that we use the same process for design review that we use for entrance corridor overlay. But I need to go back and make sure that my article here is actually the correct article by looking at some of the older zoning ordinances. So it would be reasonable comp plan amendment, potentially a rezoning, campus master plan, design review, site plan approval before you get to building permit.
Right. And arguably, since Washington Lee is the western border of the city, that entrance there, it would be applicable for that.
And that's why, my presumption here, but I got to make sure that it's true, that that's the reason for it. There is some design review, but our standards are minimal. I don't want to give you too much hope that all of a sudden you can use the design standards that we have in the entrance corridor to really apply it too terribly much because they're fairly limited.
Yeah. I've got two questions. Washington Lee owns property, I'm sorry, leases property in the city, for instance, the old courthouse. Can they apply for that to be part of the institutional overlay? Lease property can be if they're occupying it.
If the, if an application were to come in to us today, we would have to have the owner's signature on it. So as long as the application for rezoning and the amendment to the campus master plan had the owner, current owner's signature on it, so that they're well-aware that their tenant is doing something to their property, yes.
Right. Okay. There are a few other additional properties that Washington and Lee could request to be, that they're leasing, they don't own, that they could ask to be put in the overlay. The other question is what latitude do we have for proffers? My perception is we can ask for anything. It's a negotiable circumstance, but we can't require any proffers per our code, but that can be discussed and negotiated?
Correct. In the rezoning, we're still somewhat limited to what can and cannot occur with the proffers. They have to, a conservative opinion is they still have to be proffered by the applicant. So in the rezoning of a piece of property that's supposed to come in for the institutional overlay, they should be proffering something. One way that we quote-unquote negotiate that is we say in the staff report, we're not in favor of this particular project without a traffic impact analysis. And then if the applicant is hearing that and hasn't proffered it already, they will say, okay, in writing, we will proffer a traffic impact analysis for that particular project.
Okay. Thinking more specifically, there have been some suggestions from the public of payment in lieu of taxes as things change. And that's not within the zoning, but I just reference that as we become aware of what options we have going forward. Because Washington Lee, there's, you know, no limit as to what they could proffer.
The applicant has the ability and should be thinking forward enough when the impacts that they may be creating by whatever the project is and knowing that limitations that we have under Virginia law, that to make the process easier, they do have the ability and should be considering proffers for those times that we have a rezoning to institution.
Arnie, great job. I'm going to pull the plug because it's, I have 6:54 and we have our seven o'clock meeting scheduled. So again, great job. Thank you for walking us through this. And I know I think I can speak for everyone that we're wiser as we move forward with this project for Washington Lee and any other institutional overlay in our city. We stand adjourned and we'll reconvene at 7:00.